Good afternoon. My name is Karen Goodfellow. I'm the Director of Public Art in the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. And in that capacity, I'm the Director of the Boston Art Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone to this May 25th special meeting of the Boston Art Commission on Indigenous Public Art and Cultural Spaces. I would like to remind you that this meeting is being recorded to update your name and pronouns on your Zoom profile. And to please keep yourself muted until the Chair or Vice Chair invite you to make testimony when it is your turn so that we can each hear and really listen to each other. Like at our regular meetings, we'll be engaged in discussion about public art in Boston in order to foster the creation and collection of artworks that reflect the people, ideas, histories, and futures of Boston, which is the traditional homeland of the Massachusetts people. We acknowledge the continuing presence of the Massachusetts as well as the Wampanoag and Nipmuck peoples. We also recognize the indigenous peoples represented in the city's residents, in addition to those in the diaspora. This meeting is responsive to a community request that were made during the public meetings on the reexamination of the city's public art collection last summer, as well as suggested as next steps identified in an opportunity for change, a preliminary report we commissioned in 2018 on the national dialogue surrounding monuments and the relevance to Boston's public art collection, and more recently, the panel series, Confronting Colonial Miss in Boston's Public Space by Boston Artist and Residence Erin Genia, who joins us today. We have invited local indigenous leaders, artists, cultural workers to give short verbal testimony, and we hope to have time to also hear from others in attendance today. We also want to acknowledge that this is the one year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. Before we begin, we would like to invite you to join us in a moment of silence and feel free to turn off your camera if you like. Thank you. As background, the Boston Art Commission, staffed by the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, is an independent board composed of two ex officio and seven appointed volunteer art and design professionals that holds public meetings for review and vote on matters concerning the city's art collection. Meetings are generally held the second Tuesday of each month to review current public art projects cited on or proposed for city of Boston property. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually. To ensure public access to deliberations of the Boston Art Commission, the public may access this meeting through telephone and video conferencing. I'm joined by Boston Art Commission staff working within the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, Sarah Rodrigo, Public Art Project Manager, Tricia Gilrain, Collections Manager, as well as our collaborator Sharon Almoguni, Boston Air Program Manager, who will be helping facilitate this meeting. I will now hand it over to Chair Mark Paznik and Vice Chair Equa Holmes, who will call the meeting to order and go over some further instructions.
Thank you, Karen, and a really hearty welcome to everyone on a beautiful afternoon. I'm calling this public hearing to order at 4:14 PM today. The Boston Art Commission will be holding its monthly public meeting. Next slide. I will now take roll call of the commissioners to confirm a quorum. Equa Holmes.
Here.
Camilo Alvarez.
Here.
John Andres.
Here.
Michael Canizo. I don't see him. Cara Elliott Ortega. Robert Freeman.
Here.
Brian Hohn.
Here.
And Kim Pinder. I thought I saw.
I'm here.
Great, welcome, Kim.
Thank you.
So we do officially have a quorum. I'd like to open up to our first order of business to review the minutes from the May 11th meeting. Are there any comments or modifications any commissioners would like to make at this time? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Approve the minutes, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from 5:11:21.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And that was?
John.
John, okay, thank you, John. I'll take the roll call again for a vote. Equa Holmes.
Yes.
Camilo Alvarez.
Yes.
John Andres.
Yes.
Robert Freeman.
Yes.
Brian Hohn.
Yes.
And Kim Pinder.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so the motion passes. On this slide, you will see the agenda we will be following today. The agendas for these meetings are always posted publicly on boston.gov. We will begin with the director's report and then move into presentations for review and our public testimony. At the time of the presentations, we'll provide you with information on how you can participate. Karen, I'll pass it to you now.
Thanks, Mark. As context for today's meeting, we're sharing recent milestones in our work together in public art, from updating our policies to publishing and iterating on procedures to redefining our understanding of what public art is and can be. In all these entries, you'll see highlights of the work the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture and Boston Art Commission have been doing to address failures and voids in the city's public art and commemorative landscape. And you'll also see the influence of people, notably the artists and cultural organizers, in pressing for transformative artworks in every neighborhood to demanding and demanding for the removal of artworks that miseducate us and tell us false and harmful stories. We share this today to remind us all that our work is dynamic and rooted in community dialogue. Today, we'll also be joined by Boston Artist and Residence Erin Genia. Boston Artist and Residence AIR is a city program where a cohort of artists, from poets to painters to drummers, collaborate with a parallel cohort of city partners over the course of a year to explore critique and reimagine city initiatives at the intersection of civil service, racial and social service, and artistic practice. We support these year-long co-design projects between artists and city staff to break out of our siloed approach to our work and understand the holistic municipal needs of communities. AIRS create projects that hope to reimagine more creative and equitable Boston. Often, that reimagining has naturally included conversations around our public art and memorials. We often see artist-driven public art projects and conversations developing through the AIR program. On this slide, you can see some projects from current and former AIRS that directly connect to our public art, one of which was Erin Genia's Confronting Colonial Miss series. Today's meeting is a first step in responding to requests from the Confronting Colonial Miss series, the recommendations from the Opportunity for Change Report, and the continuation of the public arts reexamination process. And we'll talk more about her work. I'd like now to introduce Erin. Erin Genia Sisseton-Wapentin Dakota is a multi-disciplinary artist, educator, and organizer whose practice merges cultural imperatives, pure expression, and material exploration with the conceptual. She seeks to create a powerful presence of indigeneity in the arts, sciences, and public realm to invoke an evolution of thought and practice that is aligned with the cycles of the natural world and the potential of humanity. With that, I'll pass to Erin.
Thank you, Karen. Erin Genia Imakiapi, Massachusetts, Edwati, Sisseton-Wapentin, Echeteron, Oahu. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a visitor in these lands. I am from Sisseton-Wapentin Oyate of the Lake Traverse Reservation in South Dakota. And I moved here via Olympia, Washington, where I lived for two decades. Almost five years ago, I came here to study and graduated from the MIT program in art, culture, and technology. I have over a decade of experience in the field of Native Arts and Cultural Heritage Resources as an artist, administrator, and educator. I am nearing the end of my term as an artist and residence with the city of Boston, and I'm here today to urge the city to examine the existing arts collection and increase programming and opportunities for Native American artists and culture bearers within the arts and culture landscape of our city. Native American arts and culture is not merely deferative. It represents who we are as peoples. In some ways, I feel that Native Peoples' arts and culture is a modern-day battleground of perpetual colonization, where cultural appropriation, ethnic fraud, and the ever-expanding lack of access to the land that is the source of our cultures through economic, political, and social means, and increasingly through climate change, continues to threaten our way of life. These issues, as well as a need to face painful historical legacies and present-day injustices of our reality as a settler state, are intertwined with our arts and culture and cannot be separated from them. Understanding, making space for, and working to address these inherent issues are part of the landscape and scope of this work. Any good faith efforts must do this. In my work, I often come across the question from well-meaning but ignorant people who ask me, is an indigenous culture the answer to all of our problems? There are so many ways that this question is awful, but hearing it so many times has contributed to the development of the project that I've been working on for this residency, which interrogates American culture. And it's called Cultural Emergency Response. So what my project has done is to look at the philosophical and ideological constructs of the dominant culture and apply an emergency response framework to them. It's our cultural foundations that determine our economic, political, and social systems, how they're established and how they operate. They have created disasters and large-scale crises like climate change, institutional racism, economic inequality, epidemics, ecosystemic destruction, and so many more, too many to list right now. My residency was with the Office of Emergency Management, and through this learning more about the work that they do, I have considered how emergency management procedures can be creatively leveraged to address the cultural emergencies, which are at the root of the most pressing crises of our time, in order to prevent them from magnifying and to challenge us to build cultural transformations and recalibrations into our systems. I would like to invite you to please take a look at my website or webpage on the boston.gov website for more information about my research and work on the Cultural Emergency Response Framework. Some of the work that I've been doing with this has included a cultural emergency kit giveaway through nominations by people. Cultural emergency first responders have been nominated by different community members, and they will receive cultural emergency kits that consist of health, wellness, and art items that are critical for dealing with cultural emergencies, and many of the items within the kits are made by Native American producers. I also have created this beaded cultural emergency vest, which I wanted to share this little video about the vest-making process here with you today, and then go right into the hearing from everybody today. But before we do, I just want to say, Wopita Tanka, thank you so much to everybody for coming today to speak, and thank you to Karen Goodfellow and Sharon Almoguni for all of your support of my work, and to the Boston Art Commissioners for your time today. So if you could please play the video, it'd be great. Thank you. I really appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you very much, Erin. It's been a pleasure to hear from you so many times, and we hope to continue the relationship working with you long into the future, even after AIR. So thank you for joining us today and for arranging so many honored guests to be here. We now want to move on to the items on the agenda for review, public testimony and commission vote. In this case, it's essentially a listening exercise for us to hear the voices of those of you who've come to join us. You'll notice at the bottom of the screen there are instructions for a public testimony, which we will review now. Next slide. I believe we have already a list. Is that correct, Karen?
Yeah, we have a list of folks to RSVP, but we also, after we get through the queue, will start adding people who may also be interested if we have time. So please, if you didn't RSVP, if you raise your hand, we'll add you to the list.
So for those of you who have not RSVP'd, this is how you can participate in today's meeting. Those who have will be identifying you in the sequence that we have already planned for. So if you have not RSVP'd during the meeting, please keep yourself muted. If you have difficulties during the meeting, you can ask questions in the chat, and a member of the staff will help you. After presentations and, sorry, after the discussions from those who've already RSVP'd, I will open up to public testimony from those who have not RSVP'd. If you'd like to participate, you can press the Raise Your Hand icon, and staff will put you in the digital line for comment. You can also let staff know that if you have a question in the chat, that they can help you communicate that question. If you're calling in on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Please remember to keep your comments on topic, and we're asking for a five-minute limit on testimony.
So just to add two more cents to that, our goal is to make this meeting a very good experience for all so that every community member feels comfortable sharing their feedback and their questions, because we hope to continue to have these kinds of dialogue. So please be mindful and respectful of other people's time when speaking so that other participants can feel comfortable adding their comments. However, if you have longer testimony that you'd like to share, you can submit that to bac@boston.gov. Occasionally, we disagree with other attendees' testimony. However, we ask that you don't interrupt them while they're speaking and during their allotted time. Also, please keep questions and comments project-specific. We have a theme here this evening, so we ask that everybody kind of stay on topic. If you are called on, please state your name, title, if relevant, program or organization, if that's relevant. And also, we just ask that you be kind in your comments to not make any commentary that might be ableist or considered abusive. We really appreciate you all coming and sharing your thoughts, and if we pay attention to these little notations, I think it's going to be amazing.
Great, and I think all of us look forward to learning quite a lot today. We've had some discussions in the past that have really informed us as a commission and help us understand how we can serve our communities better. So that's the goal of today, I think, for all of us, is to really listen and to be able to be responsive to things that you can help us understand better. So with that, I believe, are we going to open up the testimony queue? Is that the plan? So will that be live on the screen, or perhaps it is best if we just have the images of folks on the screen? So first in the queue I have is Toni Otun-Harjo, Growing Thunder. So you are first on our list. Are you here? And if so, please unmute yourself and then begin your sharing.
I am here, thank you, and congratulations. You said my name correct.
Oh, great, thank you. Erin gave me a little help.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you all. I want to say speak on my appreciation for the Boston Art Commission for inviting me to speak here today. I am Toni Otun-Harjo, Growing Thunder. I am an enrolled member of the Kiwa tribe and also Muskegee Seminole on my father's side, and I am a full-blood American Indian. And one thing that I want to share today as an artist and a curator, I am currently fellow member of the Center for Curatorial Leadership, a New York-based organization which selects 10 curators throughout the year, and my host institution this year is the Boston MFA. My program leader is Matthew Toddlebaum, and so I've been working very closely with Matthew. But however, my life has always included New England and Boston. Boston was very, I would say, safe haven and also monumental in our lives as the Otun-Harjo family. My mom, as an artist who you'll hear from later in the conversation today, her art career as a Kiwa artist, varying over the 40 years, 50 years, whatever age we're claiming today. But we have seen differences and changes, highlights and downsides of art participation in Boston, and so that's really what we want to talk about today. Myself, first as an artist and then as a curator throughout the years, Boston has been very giving to us along the lines of research availability and then artist opportunities when it came to galleries and exhibitions with the museum culture that is there. As I got into my older days within high school and college, I am a Harvard graduate alumnus there. I went into the museum studies program and also into the business program and continued to stay in the New England area where I did curatorial shifts. And one thing that I want to say, which was very disappointing and which I've seen a shift over the past years, is that it hasn't been very inclusive to those of us from the intertribal populations as transplants. And one thing that we really want the Boston Arts Commission to know and the greater Boston community is that you are a major metropolis city, just like New York, just like Los Angeles. And our tribal nations across the country with the 574 tribes, our communities pay a lot for our tribal members to attend college and to gain a higher education. And many of our people relocate because Boston is the home to the, in my opinion, home to the greatest academic status in the world. I've attended Oxford. It didn't hold up to what Boston was in the culture. I found my footing in myself with Harvard, but also working with other scholars at MIT, at Boston University, and then many of the other colleges across the state. So that being said, we as community members and transplants who come from communities from across the country, First Nations of Canada, or other indigenous nations, feel a sense of being left behind. There's not a lot of opportunity for us to join in because we are students who maybe will not change our residential status being from tribal reservations from other communities. That really hinders a big problem for some of us because our economic status does not allow us to afford the stability of housing in the community. And so what I want to say is that the artist's opportunities are really lacking there that are inclusive to us. And for the granting agencies, I want to make sure that they acknowledge those of us who are from other enrolled tribes from across the nation. And terminology is very important when it comes to National Congress of the American Indian, also the USAT, which is the United Southeastern Tribes Organization. And to understand that there are 574 federally recognized tribes, which also include the state-recognized. Now, when it comes to the arts, you know, we want to argue a lot of times of the issue of state-recognized or people who don't have enrollment. But when it comes to the arts, that is an isolated incident according to what we're facing. So it is true, we do have a lot of fraud taking place in the arts community. However, if we maintain those lines of all the authentication of the individuals, that's where we can first make sure that we are upholding the rights of our people, but also along the lines of these federal dollars that are exchanging hands, state dollars that are allocated to the arts. And that's really what I want to inform the Boston Arts Commission, because public art is so important, but it is also something that allows us to express that creativity. So when you're far from home, you want to be able to find yourself that you don't feel so homesick. And by making those opportunities, that is something that we need to make. And I know it is so imperative that we honor our ancestral and inherent right to the land, but it also is important that we be the gathering point to support others. And that's really what I want to say today. I don't know if I have any time left, but I do yield my time.
No, you used up just about the perfect amount of time. So thank you also for launching us with some deep concern about youth and a larger question about geography and how our art processes can engage people who are, as you said, left behind or feel left behind. So thank you for sharing that. Our second speaker is Elizabeth James Perry.
Thank you. I want to express appreciation to the Boston Arts Council and to Erin Genia for inviting me to participate in today's testimony. My name's Elizabeth James Perry, and I'm an enrolled member of the Aquina Wampanoag Tribe. I live a little south of Boston, so I'm here in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, about an hour away. But I'm often in and about the city, most recently installing a garden at the Museum of Fine Arts called Raven Reshapes Boston. My background is a combination of marine biology, where I worked in fisheries research and environmental sustainability. It's in traditional ecological knowledge and traditional arts. I'm a lifelong artist who learned from many family members and generous community members and members of the broader New England native public, especially in the Northeast. You know, northern New England as well as southern New England, I would say, essentially. I exhibit quite a lot. I've also done many demonstrations of traditional art techniques, some of them what you would consider endangered art techniques. They're relatively rare for a number of reasons. One is that some of them are very time-consuming, comparatively speaking. But we also face, as indigenous people here in Massachusetts, challenges because we're in a densely populated state, and in an eastern part of the state is very, very densely populated. There's a lot of development that's happened. Even over the past 70 years, things have really changed from what, you know, my grandmother and great-grandmother had for resources on Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket, on the Cape, and throughout the mainland. Things are just different. The economic possibilities for our communities have also shifted and changed, and in many instances, oftentimes dried up as well as those natural resources went away. We could not practice as many arts to sustain our communities really well. The whaling industry, which has its own, you know, issues, I guess I would say, if I want to severely understate it, that really sustained a lot of Native men who were looking for gainful employment, looking to make a name for themselves as career whalerman, but also harvesting that baleen and harvesting that ivory and making beautiful scrimshaw and selling that and exchanging it in community as well. So there's aspects of work that always also involve cultural expression and art and creativity, and a lot of that has happened from Boston. There are tribal members who were merchants of Boston in the 18th century who were Wampanoag. There are tribal members who were engaged in various businesses, attending colleges, believe it or not. So attending Harvard and all under scholarships many, many generations ago, starting in the 17th century with Wampanoags from the island. So we've always been part of the cultural makeup, you know, even in colonial times, certainly previous to colonial times, very strong. There are a lot of pressures. There are a lot of challenges. It is different to go into a place. And I guess I'm repeating the previous two speakers that were very. I guess I'm repeating the the previous two speakers that were very excellent and eloquent. It is challenging not to be reflected in the cityscape that is Boston. You know, in terms of color palette, shape of homes or buildings, the sensibilities of tribal artisans is it's not something that has been incorporated, considered. No room, I feel, has been made for that. And I hope it's happening now that there are those possibilities for some inclusion. Also, I think as someone who's interested in environmental sustainability, thinking about ways to care for the earth even in a city, ways to acknowledge that we're on an earth that is taking good care of us, even if we don't immediately have a ton of plants in plain view producing air and inspiring our art and, you know, giving us supplies to to practice our art ways. So ways to somehow understand that we're still connected to each other and the planet and the ocean, which is right there. But I've, again, I don't know if it's acknowledged a lot. As people go about their lives in Boston, I can't tell. People don't necessarily ask me a lot, but I think, you know, if spaces were made for native people to participate, I think there have been efforts in the past. I was just rereading, you know, about my, one of my teachers and mentors, Helen Adequin, who, you know, instructed me with traditional finger weaving and a little basketry. And she had a good knowledge of herbs and quill work and all. I was reading some of her work in the area. She attended Boston University and earned a PhD there in around nineteen seventy-one, nineteen seventy-two, maybe. And she and her mom were very, very active in the political arena, trying to get tribal sovereignty shorn up and respected, preserving cultural ways, getting institutions to consult with tribal cultural bearers. So working with Boston Children's Museum, Boston Indian Center was started. The D. Cordova Museum actually created a position so that my cousin eventually went to work there for a time. It's it's fleeting, it seems, you know. The Boston Indian Center certainly still exists as an ICOP. But when I look at the notes for these conferences that were held, these big multi-tribal conferences, so many, you know, aspirations were never really reached. And I just wonder why that's been so unattainable in a city with so many resources and so many possibilities. Why, why does that relationship tend to be very, very, very weak? You know, it's it's really something to ponder, something that's really challenging. But I think, you know, if you want to engage with native artists from Wampanoag or Nipmuck or Mahican, we're artists, we're creative people and creative thinkers. And so it's not going to be unpleasant, you know. We will keep you entertained. We do have a lot of creative, beautiful visions. And so I think I think there's only good things to be gained by strengthening those relationships and making opportunities. So I think with that, I will yield to the next speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's a really impassioned combination. By the way, my brother is works in fisheries too, so we have some family overlaps. But I was struck by your your presentation in terms of the questions of sustainable sustaining a community and also maybe the lack of the feeling that the community is present here in the work that we've done in the past and in the shape of the city and many questions. So I hope that we can continue to talk to you and address those ways that we can make those voices more present in our city. Thank you. Our next speaker then is Jonathan James Perry.
Chau, wamiki saak, natasuiis, Jonathan James Perry, mitomas akonahana. Hello, my name is Jonathan James Perry, and I hail from the Aquina Community of the Wampanoag Nation located on Martha's Vineyard in Massachusetts. You may actually realize that from my sister who just spoke. So it's good to, good to be here and good to see her face. I want to first start off by thanking the Boston Arts Council and also Erin Genia for the hard work and dedication and efforts put forth to create the space for us and to start this dialogue in this fashion and give us a platform that is that that has been sorely needed and ideally will will help us to springboard forward in a positive direction that is inclusive and reflective of the many, many thousands of years of indigenous ownership and continuance and participation and beauty and life and death and everything that is in the landscape that Boston now is rooted. And so it's it's an honor and a privilege to be here. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to speak today. I come I come to this gathering from maybe a slightly unique perspective or position in that I am a five-terms elected tribal leader for my nation. And my responsibility is to to work for and include and push forward opportunities to represent and protect and educate and create space for all of my tribal nation. I swear to the Constitution of my tribal nation and I have to carry myself with honor and dedication and respect in all in all matters for my people. I am also an artist and have had the privilege of growing up with a very artistic family, including an older sister who always raised the bar and challenged me every step of the way. But also, it it helps to have a very respected artist as a as a mother and a very creative father who also was artistic and is artistic and was extremely supportive. So as a result, I was able to participate in a lot of, especially culturally focused arts throughout my whole life, starting as a as a young child prior to even being a teenager and then very active throughout my teenage years and young adult life. I was privileged and honored to be requested by Harvard University and most specifically the Hunap students, including Tiffany Smalley, a Wampanoag tribal member from my nation, who wanted to acknowledge the school's long indigenous history as a as an indigenous teaching space and was lucky enough to build the traditional cedar-structured weed to in Harvard Yard a number of years ago. I wish it was still standing today, but I feel as though in some ways we reclaim that space forever. And I always look fondly at the place where we set that weed to, as do, I think, a lot of the indigenous students that still matriculate through Harvard. And I am probably well-known for, in in a number of circles, for helping to and really springboarding the reclaiming of indigenous peoples' maritime trade and tradition practices through dugout canoe-making and paddling along the coastline and of course, the Charles River. For the, you know, for instance, the Deer Island canoe paddle where where I personally paddled the same boat we paddled to Martha's Vineyard many years ago to Deer Island, the same vessel, the same crew, including Jim Peters of the Boston Commission on Indian Affairs and of course, Drys Coons of Mashpee, who is now employed in their tribal nation. And so I ultimately want to say that as an indigenous person who is a leader and is very passionate about inclusion and continuance and protection and acknowledgement and acknowledging Wampanoag people's long, long history, both recorded in in modern method and recorded in our tribal nation and in our stories, our language and rooted deep within us to the place that is referred to now as Boston. I am hopeful that I will be able to enter a place such as a very well-known, very visited, very important place, a very high-learning, acknowledged and powerful place such as as Boston and see something that reflects its many thousands of years of history and its indigenous population and indigenous people across the nation, of course, because we are inherited and we are part of the system. It is not, ultimately, I find it not appropriate to have the image of a native person flying on the flag and to have our language being used in the governmental structure and the government of our people being used in in a way that assists this, the state and the nation and for our medicines and our foods to be used in such a fashion, but for our people to remain invisible even though we are standing before you. And so it is important, it is imperative, that there be perhaps an effort made to create a commission or council of advisors of indigenous people who can help to guide the process and to help to make sure that installations and developments of various exhibits and the utilization of public space be reflective of indigenous people, of plant species of importance and meaning to us, of animal populations that are that are important and are are deep-rooted such as as we are. And that there is that opportunity, hopefully, for evermore to include our population in this, to create economic opportunity, education opportunity, public visibility opportunity, so that we are not consistently being looked at and considered invisible or so that we do not enter places like like Boston and feel as though we are strangers in our own home. Ultimately, I cannot express it any differently than to feel completely outcast, alone and removed from place than to enter a space that has absolutely no acknowledgement of our thousands of years of continuance. And so that ultimately is is what I wanted to to get to.
Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing that. And it's so, it synthesizes a lot of thoughts, I think, into that short phrase. And I was also struck by your earlier comment that we should be more inclusive and reflective in this place. And these seem like good mission statements for us to think about the public art collection being presenting more the lives of those who have been part of the stewards of this land for much longer times. So thank you for sharing that. Aqwa, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm happy to step in to introduce our next speaker, Matowen Monroe. Are you present? And if so, please unmute yourself.
I'm Petu Washte, Matoya, Emi Kiap. My name is Matoy. Good afternoon to everybody. And I am co-leader of United American Indians of New England and a Lakota person. Thank you for inviting me to be part of this panel today. When I visit other cities such as Vancouver, Los Angeles, Albuquerque, Minneapolis, Winnipeg, I have seen vibrant community and public art in many neighborhoods that reflects multiple communities in those cities. Black, indigenous, Latina, Asian, Pacific Islander, and many other communities are visibly represented, murals abound. There are spaces and resources available to create art within the communities. And then I look at Boston, where I have lived for more than thirty-five years and where for centuries, public art has largely served to erase indigenous, black and other people of color in the city, even though there are so many brilliant artists in this region. Certain communities have been heavily policed and told that they cannot, what they can and cannot do and where they cannot be with their art. These communities have often been denied the ability to engage in public art in a meaningful way. And art that these communities create has even sometimes been removed by city authorities. Nineteenth-century statues of forgotten mayors have been valued over murals created in and by oppressed communities in Boston. There has been a deliberate effort in Boston to ensure that whitewashed history is largely what tourists see. And I see this a lot because I've worked in the financial district for many years. Public art in Boston is largely a reflection and a mirror of whiteness. And there has been a deliberate effort to play along with the segregation of Boston's communities by segregating art. Walking around Boston, people would scarcely know about indigenous communities that were here for millennia before the English settlers showed up. I see nothing at the waterfront. I can certainly see the native people kneeling down before the Puritans at the Founder's Wall in the Common. And the Puritan governor John Winthrop has a statue nearby. John Winthrop, who kept indigenous slaves and helped to write the first law in the US sanctioning the practice of keeping African slaves. I walk around and I do not see pretty much anything in a public art realm that beautifies or educates or stimulates thought by reflecting indigenous cultures. It would be wonderful to see indigenous art at the Boston waterfront where the Columbus statue used to stand or to see indigenous-centered art funded and supported by the city in Jamaica Plain outside the North American Indian Center in Boston Building on South Huntington Avenue, where thousands of people pass every day. Boston public art should center indigenous peoples from this region, the Wampanoag, Massachusetts and Nipmuck. It should also reflect the presence and cultures of other indigenous peoples from this hemisphere who live in the Boston area, whether Ni'gma, Maya, Taino, Mohawk, Lumbee, Apuche, Ochetti Shakoi and many others. It's not technically a public art space in front of the MFA, but it's indeed a very public location on Huntington Avenue. So I was happy to hear that the front of the MFA will soon be transformed with installations by an Aquina Wampanoag artist and a black artist. We need many more such transformations to overcome the whitewashing of Boston, such as confronting existing art to point out who held black and indigenous slaves. We need art that honors important indigenous figures in Boston and Massachusetts history and shows contemporary indigenous cultures, since so many non-native people in the area seem to think we are extinct. Given how segregated the city has been and continues to be, I'd also like to see collaborations across communities envisioning and creating art. It's also time to dump the Columbus statue that's in Lewisburg Square and rename Columbus Park, since they are coded as white spaces that are hostile to indigenous people. Our neighborhoods, as well as the city's areas, such as the financial district that are heavily trafficked by tourists, should have indigenous cultures and histories reflected throughout. Public gardens can be planted with native plants identified by their native names rather than Latin names. Installations of art, including music and dance, can happen in so many different locations. And while I immensely respect the talent and skill and role of professional artists, I also submit that creating public art should not be out of reach to non-professionals. It's something that communities can undertake, given resources, spaces and leadership from artists. Boston can do much better. And I appreciate that this commission is taking the time to listen and consider how to move forward in a better way to re-center indigenous peoples here in the city. Wapuiala.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful and kind of reminded me of a comment someone made that our city streets are a classroom and we are teaching all the time what we value, what we hold dear, what we hold up. You had some great ideas, so thank you very much. Look forward to discussing them more.
Well, could I just ask one other thing? Would you be willing to share? It it sounds like you may have read your statement. It would be great if you could email that to us as well. It was beautifully written, so.
You bet.
Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Jenny Oliver. Please unmute yourself. We'd love to hear from you.
Hello. Good afternoon. Greetings, everyone. Thank you for having me. I also wrote my statement, so I will be looking down as I'm reading. And so I'll begin. Greetings to all on this call and thank you to the Boston Arts Commission and Erin Genia for inviting me to speak today. I'm happy to lend my voice to another hearing on. I'm happy to lend my voice to another hearing on issues affecting indigenous people and our community. My name is Jenny Oliver, and I am a creative who works at the intersection of dance, education, and advocacy for artistic integrity. As a black artist, black native artist who is living, working, and paying taxes in Boston, I appreciate the opportunity to share my viewpoints on the matter of public art. I hope that my words add light to the testimony of others on this call. I am an enrolled member of the Massachusetts Tribe at Ponca Pog with ancestral connections to neighboring tribes, which is proof of the cultural nature of how our ancestors lived, which is very different now in the year 2021. The reality of not having a clear, visible, tangible presence of indigenous perspective in the public spaces of colonial Boston is the reality of erasure that many indigenous and native folks experience today. Boston is one of the cities with the longest historical connection to the indigenous people within Imperial United States of America and its territories. Therefore, it is the responsibility of those who govern the city to demand that independent representation of indigenous and native people be included in the landscape. And more importantly, the opportunity for deep relations with native folks and their kin. Much of our cultural practice is outside of the peripheral of the dominant cultures and of the dominant cultures' values and beliefs, which is why it's important that indigenous and native folks have full autonomy of how they decide to create. Art is not separate from our ways of living, and therefore, we use methods of creation that are sacred and innate for us as people in relationship to our lands, not as property, but as kin. There's no way that folks from variant belief backgrounds and values can come together on a project or an idea without establishing a relationship that is based on mutual respect, on maybe possible today, and understanding. I want that this office find more ways to engage in the art that is already being made by indigenous folks. I want to take this time to lift up some of the work that is happening here in Massachusetts with individual artists, although this is not an exhaustive list. Deborah Spears Morehead, Sidata Jackson, Neal Hawley, Kristin Wyman, Robert Peters, Erin Genia, Morgan Peters, my cousin Jeannie Foster, my late uncle Eugene Oliver, who played the piano, Lily Many Colors, Elizabeth Perry, Marsha Pahia, Ellie Pavon, Maitoui Monroe, and all her work that is an art form, and all of the indigenous and native folks whose practice includes art but aren't recognized in these types of spaces that have a tendency to be filled with bureaucracy. I want to take this time again to thank the Boston Arts Commission and Erin Genia for inviting me to speak today, and to everyone on this call for engaging in the space that has been created for all of us. I hope.
Thank you, Jenny. And thank you for calling out the names of artists that are working in Boston right now and whose work is important. And I'm happy to get to know some folks that I didn't know. I did hear a few that I did, so I'm looking forward to more. Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to introduce Robert Peters to unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you. My name is Robert Peters Mashby Wampanoag, Boston resident for the past 40 years. I retired from the MBTA, was a subway driver. So I was very much in tune with the cultural and physical changes of the city over the last 40 years. And I've seen a lot of growth. And during that time, I've seen the native community decline. The heyday of North American Indian Center was in the 70s. And that was a time where every office was occupied, you know, by somebody with some sort of a program, you know, that would benefit the native community. And up until about seven years ago, we had ceremonial land. We had a piece of property on South Huntington Ave that was sold to developers. And 16-story building is on it right now that was incidentally put up without any public hearings. And it's something that was a great loss to the native community. And it caused the, the numbers to dwindle. So we've been largely individualized as people over the years. And I think now we need to be able to, first of all, find a place for our ceremonial, educational, and cultural activities, because right now, we have none for the first time in over 40 years. And I believe that having that be public space is essential to making it work. It's essential to our relationship with the city of Boston. And I think that the city of Boston should have a relationship with its Native American residents, who we can only estimate now how many there are, but it's somewhere around 5,000 or 6,000 people. That through programming, through having an office or official place in the city of Boston, it can really bring our community together and make it as vibrant as it once was, and even more so. I would, I would love to see us partner with the school department and have educational programs that would educate Boston public students on our culture. And, and right here on this call, we have people who can implement these programs from grade school to grad school. So any way you cut it up, if you really build this in a thoughtful and loving way, it's going to be something that is lucrative, not just in the cultural aspect, but it, it would help the city of Boston grow culturally, and it could help us grow as people. And in a nutshell, I know I have time, but that's all I want to put on the table. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Robert. I'm always happy when the word loving comes into a meeting like this, because it's such an essential part of anything that we'll, we'll ever do together. It's the glue that holds us all, all together. So thank you for bringing up the word loving. The next person who's going to speak is?
I'll take over.
Take over, okay.
Yeah, that will do three and three. So I also just want to say, I, I love when I hear learning coming up too, because I'm an educator. And it's great how often the idea of education is a part of what you're talking about. How can we consider ourselves a center of learning if we're not telling all the stories? And that seems like a, a sort of consistent theme. I'm hearing in a number of things that we're not doing a good enough job with our public art to tell the kinds of stories that we should be. So our next speaker is Jean-Luc Parit. Jean-Luc, are you here? We're not hearing you if you're speaking.
I think he's having a little bit of, of tech difficulty. So I think he was doing this on his screen and then doing the audio on his phone. So maybe we can just give him a second. We, we experienced a few technical difficulties at the beginning of our meeting, and we apologize for the delay, delay that caused us.
Is Jean-Luc on the, oh, we can now hear you, yes.
Yeah, sorry. I, I, I tried to, try to be smart and put, put audio on phone and do all kinds of, sorry.
We're happy to have you now, so.
Bad, bad bandwidth. But yeah, my name is Jean-Luc Parit. I'm president of the Board of Directors at the North American Indian Center of Boston, a member of the Tunica Biloxi Tribe of Louisiana. So my, the first image that I wanted to bring to this conversation was just shots of our action that we held in coordination with several community organizations last year in response to all of the, the challenges, the structural violence that our communities are facing. Here you see black, indigenous, Palestinian people coming together for an action that was an expression of, of joy, of spirituality, of art within, within the streets. And so that's how I wanted to kind of enter into this conversation about how North American Indian Center of Boston addresses these issues. In addition to being president at Nakab, I'm also a student in the Masters in Design for Emergent Futures at the Institute of Advanced Architecture of Catalonia in Barcelona, Spain. And my project is called Indigenous Fab. Through this project, I'm hoping to address the issue of decolonization, not just from the dichotomy of indigenous nations and nation-states, but then how can we also further acknowledge the agency of non-human actors? Not, and also addressing territories, not just as places to occupy, but going to a realization that there is no such thing as terra nullis. Here, I was actually kind of exploring in my research about how we have these narratives built into our built environments. And so taking it from the kitchen debate between Nixon and Khrushchev, kitchen debates held by IKEA, sort of thinking about like, what is the future of our, our domestic environments? And then thinking about how to actually explore indigenous narratives within our own sort of home spaces and design spaces. So thinking about like those systems of value, I actually like went back to my own tribe and thought about, thought about how we had held and exchanged value. So this is a picture of a medal that my tribe was actually gifted by Spain. And this was related to actually a land grant where my tribe is actually now currently based in central Louisiana. So thinking about sort of like those individualistic sort of systems of value, and then going into this other system of value, which we see reflected here in New England, especially through the works of artisans such as Elizabeth James Perry that we had just heard from earlier in this presentation, working with Cohog shells and Wampum beads. And what does that mean to have a collective effort towards generating value in artistic expression? But Cohog beads aren't the only sort of products of these collective efforts. We actually also have shell mittens, earthworks along New England that are now currently being endangered by rising sea levels. And these shell mittens are actually places in which artifacts of thousands of years of culture are, are buried and actually preserved. And so we have a real, a real conversation to have in terms of like climate change and rising sea levels. And what does that mean for cultural resources? Thinking about taking refuse, creating value, I then turned to Santiago X, the indigenous architect, co-Sadi member, who took these jerseys from the Chicago Blackhawks and then turned them into a burial mound. So taking the refuse of that, of native mascots, and then actually revitalizing the, the works of, of indigenous architecture from thousands of years ago. But then, from the works of Santiago X, I then brought in this, this thread of like, when we are doing art, when we are creating things for our environment, for expression, we're also creating scars within our natural environments. And so then I started to think about what are the scars that Boston has left? Where Nakab is located in Jamaica Pond in 1796, it was the first source of fresh water for, for the public. It didn't serve the North End or Beacon Hill, but there was an aqueduct that was brought, that was built from Jamaica Pond to bring fresh water at that time, and then using the gravity of the, of the area. And now we are actually, you going back to a system in which we're using gravity to extract more water, more fresh water, and further out in order to actually sustain the way in which we live. And so thinking about all of those scars, thinking about all of the rising sea levels, and how much it is actually like being, endangering our ways of life. Back home, there, the Ilde Jean Charles Band of Biloxi Chima Chocotah, who are seeing rising sea levels, eating up their land 98% since 1955. And this is an issue that's being, being brought here to the, to these territories. So this is also like, this is in Louisiana, but then this is also in New England. So then what can we do to address the water that we need to sustain ourselves? And then also the water that is actually eroding our cultures and our ways of life. And so ultimately, to wrap up, I just wanted to end on this quote from Ladonna Brable Allard, who said, "We want healing. We want clean water. We want to determine our own future. Each one of us is fighting for our grandchildren and their grandchildren, and for our relatives who cannot speak or fight back." Thank you.
Thank you, Jean-Luc. That was quite moving and striking. Being an architect myself, I'll have to get you to come in to speak to my students someday, I hope. Some very thoughtful insights you've added to our discussion today. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Tim Robertson.
Hi. I guess you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can, yes.
Cool. My name's Tim Robertson. I grew up in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm Navajo. I've been in Boston since undergrad. I came here in 2006, and I sort of stuck around. So a good 15 years, I think. And I think one of the, one of the things that's sort of always, I guess, sort of been at the back of my head, walking around Boston, has always been the sort of colonial identity, I think, is, is what's most prevalent around the center of Boston, and even extended across New England, the sense of identity to a colony or identity to the colony state. And I think this is kind of, this is a little interesting, because it, it kind of deviates a lot from Massachusetts, you know, idea of Commonwealth. You know, a colony is effectively, by definition, exploitation and extraction. At least historically, it's been. And a Commonwealth is meant to be like, you know, Commonwealth, you know, open for many people. And so I think, you know, rooted in Boston is sort of this juxtaposition of, you have people who want to be a very open liberal Commonwealth. And then you have a very strong identity tied to oppression and, I guess, extraction. Because the, you know, the colony state didn't exist until they had basically pushed out indigenous people in this area. And that, you know, that was effectively just, you know, by chance. It took them, you know, several different attempts in different colonies to try and find one to actually take root. And just so happens that this area was one of the first. So I think if we think about that, I think there, you know, as like an art commission, maybe we should consider looking through that lens. You know, what do we want to actually have the theme of this Commonwealth's art be? Is it going to be a colony state? Or do we look forward towards a Commonwealth where it's welcoming and inviting to people of multiple nations and different identities? You know, I don't, I don't believe that we need to put indigenous people front and center everywhere, but I do think that making it welcoming for indigenous people will make it welcoming for everyone. Now, the second thing I wanted, I wanted to mention is that there, I want to make sure that people are clear about that, that indigenous, the indigenous identity is a complex and nuanced issue. And I don't want anyone to get too tied up in it. But I do think it's necessary for, as like a state, and as for like just general practice, for your group to understand that the American Indian Arts and Crafts Act exists, and that it does, you know, stipulate that it is ethnic fraud to claim indigenous identity or tribal identity and sell artwork or receive compensation for artwork that, you know, is basically fraud. And, you know, that, that act has been used in some instances, but I think your, your organization can at least reinforce that and make it just effectively a sanity check. Like, does, does our organization at least vet pieces or vet candidates based on, at least following the outlined restrictions or the outlined norms of, of that, of that guiding document? And it feels weird saying that, because I'm here. And it feels weird saying that because I'm here, here I am, an indigenous person advocating for the US federal government. That is not what I wanted, that is not what I want to do, but I believe that there are treaty obligations and treaty treaty obligations that my ancestors paid in blood for. And I do not want to see those extracted like the uranium, oil or coal. And I would prefer to see that the indigenous people who do not have the leverage to find those resources end up getting them. Because it's more likely a non-indigenous person will benefit from being Indian than an Indian will benefit from being Indian. And that's just, that's just a fact. There's more, there's probably more to gain as someone who's not Indian, you know, being an Indian than actual Indians doing it. Let's see. I think, I think that's, that's kind, kind of about all, all, all I got for you.
That was pretty amazing to me, just to think that how much our city celebrates the colonial legacy as its birth story and how inappropriate that is to a Commonwealth, you know, very, very thoughtful way of reimagining the frame of the story that we should be telling. So thank you for sharing that. Okay, our next speaker is Elizabeth Solomon.
Hi there. Oops. Sorry about that. I've been having a heating pad on, so I've been off, off camera, so I apologize. So, um, my name's Elizabeth Solomon. I'm a member of the Massachusetts Tribe at Ponca Pog. And I bring greetings from the Massachusetts Tribe on whose ancestral and traditional lands, the city of Boston is located. And we continue today as the traditional holders of the land and as Boston's host indigenous community. I've struggled a bit on how to frame my testimony for this session. Undoubtedly, public art is a powerful means in its ability to frame the meanings of public spaces and to influence the way members of the public view the world themselves and others. However, the questions of how art in public space could meet the cultural needs of my community and how this office might address those needs was and is a challenge for me to answer. The cultural needs of my community are complex and trying to imagine how this body might address them is kind of hard. One of my struggles centers actually around the word art and its definition and how the dominant culture's definition and view of it fundamentally differ between the dominant culture and at least the native culture that I come from. First, there's not a word in the Massachusetts language that would translate to the way the dominant culture sees and interacts with art. The dominant culture's ideas, art is a distinct discipline, is in direct contradiction to our fundamental view of the inseparable integration of all parts of life. Secondly, public art tends to address the needs of the dominant culture in many ways, including the preference for the permanent, highlighting and honoring individuals and the perceived primacy of whiteness. The other issue is that the cultural needs of my community have been and continue to be fundamentally threatened by what has happened in this place. And public art on its own cannot address those deep cultural needs. That said, I did think a little bit about what could happen. And I think that one of the things that I think I would really like to emphasize is that it's really important not to kind of take art out of the larger picture. That art exists within a larger culture, within a larger way of being in the world. And that frequently when indigenous people are, are asked to talk about how their perspectives could be brought into this particular venue or this particular discipline, it automatically fractures the way that we look, that at least in my culture, look at life. That we don't see things in terms of this discipline is separate from that discipline and this part of life is separate from that part of life. So in a sense, for me, trying to look at art as something separate is problematic in and of itself. I think one of the things that I think is important and a number of people have talked about how there has been native presence in this place for well over ten thousand years. And I think one of the things that, that this body can do is around the, the area of acknowledging that publicly in many different ways. That could be in terms of land acknowledgements as happened at the beginning of this session, and thank you for that. But it also can happen in part, in, in the part in terms of wherever things are happening in terms of public art. They could be, land acknowledgements can be verbal, they can be written, there could be signage. And the other thing in terms of acknowledging our presence over thousands of years is yes, that can happen also in public health, but not in relation to the dominant culture as, as Matt Owen notes in regard to the Founder's Memorial where we are depicted, but we are depicted in terms of how we were colonized by another, another people. I think that the other thing that I think is, is important is the inclusion of the Massachusetts and other native people within decision-making and programming. I think that's something that people haven't mentioned earlier. That, that decisions about public art are frequently made by a select group of people who have been trained as experts. And therefore it fundamentally removes the public from public art if those are the people who are making the decisions. And so how can, how can, how can that be expanded in a way that really brings not just indigenous voices, but multiple voices who have not necessarily been classically trained in terms of art history or, or the, what is good in terms of art or what is not good in terms of art, that, that really kind of bringing art back to the public and not solely in the hands of experts. I think to touch on some things that Jonathan Perry and Elizabeth, mostly Jonathan Perry talked about was, you know, the, our, our ongoing relationship with the landscape. And that that is really important. And that, that really kind of thinking about how to collaborate with us, not just, you know, multiple indigenous peoples about how we protect and work with the environment instead of trying to make it into something that works only for us. And how do we incorporate that idea into public art? So that we are actually looking at what we are doing to a place. And how can we do it in a way that considers lives beyond those that are human? I think the other thing is, I mentioned earlier, is broadening your committees to include and forefront native and other voices that are not normally present in the halls of power. And I think this has also been mentioned by others, really having an intentional inclusion of native artists, a real intentionality around that. One of the things that I think is really important and Robert Peters mentioned this, is making space for community. For us, art is about community and it's about relationship. And so if, if you're talking about public art and native peoples, you have to be thinking about community and you have to be thinking about relationship. And to kind of keep in mind that art may look different for us than what it looks like in the dominant culture. It may not be visible. It is likely to be impermanent. And it is likely to include people who are not, quote, artists. And I think the other thing is to kind of see, again, to kind of realize that, that not to say that there aren't native people that are considered, that things that don't, that consider, not that there are not native people that consider themselves artists, but also to really kind of remember that, that, that art would be part of the community, that, that when, when, that we did not make art for somebody to hang on the wall and look at. We made art traditionally to be part of our lives. And that, that, that is something that I would love to see happening in the city of Boston. Not art is something to look at, but art is something to experience.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. That's a lot of eye-opening questions that you're asking and foundational questions about what is art and how maybe some of our structures as an organization are problematic and perceptions of where art, you know, begins and who it's for, I think are really fundamental. I will say that you probably, many of us on the commission do see art as a big part of life too. But it doesn't always happen that way in an institutional structure. So I think you have some sympathetic ears here to exactly what you're describing, even if we have a lot of work to do to perhaps improve the mechanisms that support what you're talking about. So thank you very much. Hey, Quiet?
I'm here.
Great. You're, you want to introduce our next speaker?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Adam Spry. You are next up, Adam. Looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Ani Bojou, Adam Spry, Nidhishna Kazgawab, Baghany Kagan, Don Jiba. My name is Adam Spry. I'm a descendant of the White Earth Nation, Abey Nation in Minnesota. I'm a professor at Emerson College, but I'm here testifying as a private citizen and not a representative of the college. I'd also like to acknowledge, like Erin did, that I am a relative newcomer here. I've only been here for about five years, same time as Erin has been. I do not speak on behalf of local native communities and defer to them in terms of their advocating for their needs and supporting them in what they want to see the changes happen here in Boston. I would like to, just briefly, I'm not going to take up too much time, just speak a bit to something that I see in the sort of public commemoration of native presence, both in terms of public art and other forms of public commemoration, that I want to just put in, in the minds of the commission when considering any new projects, which is the tendency of, of public art that with regards to native history and native identity that positions native people either as absolute victims of, of colonial forces and sort of anonymous victims of colonial forces or as a sort of a, I don't want to say saccharine, but a sort of sanitized version of sort of multicultural presence that native people are still here and part of the community in a sort of unproblematic way. I'd like to really heavily encourage the commission to consider projects that may have an interest in presenting a challenging view of the relationship between indigenous peoples and settlers on this continent and art that causes us to feel uncomfortable about history rather than do the work of sort of sanitizing that. To that end, I want to just briefly talk about a, a figure from local history who I think did some of this work, who himself is worthy of some amount of commemoration, which has not really happened here in Boston. And that's William Apez, Pequot, writer, Reverend scholar and activist who lived here in Massachusetts in the early nineteenth century. In eighteen thirty-eight, he spoke at the Odeon Theater on Federal Street. He gave a speech called "The Eulogy on King Philip", in which he did the work of talking about how we remember history in the public space of Boston. In that speech, he, he spoke about the way in which what Philip, a person who is either held up as a worthy opponent or a tyrant is remembered in Boston. And he made the argument that we should remember and respect him as someone who was fighting for his beliefs and his people. In that very challenging speech, he demanded that, that white Americans look in themselves to see and contend with the amount of violence that they had perpetrated to gain access to this space. William Apez's legacy has largely been forgotten and even in his own time, he was fairly marginalized as both a speaker and a scholar. Even though he was very eloquent and spoke, drew large audiences. Apez was an activist in many ways and was involved in the Mashpee uprising in, in the effort in eighteen thirty-six to protect Mashpee lands, which unfortunately are still under threat. And I would love to see a figure who, who calls attention to the struggle of native people be celebrated rather than, or not rather than, but in addition to celebrations of cultural diversity or celebrations of, of native survival alone, but rather a sense of active presence and resistance. I'm just going to end briefly by sharing some words from William Apez's speech, eighteen thirty-eight speech, and that I think are really still relevant, unfortunately, two hundred years after he gave this speech, if you indulge me. Quote, "Our groves and hunting grounds are gone, are dead or dug up, our council fires are put out and a foundation was laid in the first legislature to enslave our people by taking from them all rights which has strictly adhered to ever since. Look at the disgraceful laws disenfranchising us as citizens. Look at the treaties made by Congress, all broken. Yea, every charter that has been given was given with the view of driving the Indians out of the States or dooming them to become chained under desperate laws. And this is the course that has been pursued for nearly two hundred years. A fire, a canker created by the pilgrims from across the Atlantic to burn and destroy my poor unfortunate brethren, and it cannot be denied. What then shall we do?" Jim McQuich, thank you very much.
Wow. I had never heard of that person and I, I thank you so much for bringing up that, that history. Could you put his name in the chat if you don't mind? I'm not sure that I would be spelling it correctly. I'd love those words and thank you for sharing those. I'd love to see that up somewhere.
Is that speech readily available or is it, maybe even if you have a link to, you could share that?
Yeah, I, I, I can only chat. I can't chat to the entire group, but I can email the commission.
Oh, you could, but you could, you could chat with staff and they could put it in the full chat. Everybody could have access to that.
Yeah, if you, if you send it, then we'll, we'll send it out to everyone here.
Thank you so much. All right, our next speaker is Meredith Vasta.
Welcome. Thank you so much for this invitation to this gathering and for making space for us to talk about the importance of indigenous art. My name is Meredith Vasta. I'm Turtle Mountain Shipewa and a resident of Boston. I've been a museum professional for over twenty years. And I see the transformation art can have on the way we understand the world and how we treat each other. Art can really give us the ability to see ourselves in one another. And it is such a wonderful way to increase empathy. Much of the public art I see that reflects indigenous themes is often made by non-native artists and it really locks us into this historical narrative. Non-native artists often see us in these stereotypical sort of headdresses and clothing and we always look incredibly stoic. The work of Native American artists, though, is critical to overcoming this. We need to tell our stories and visibly be present. As indigenous people, our problem isn't that everyone knows our stories or that we're overrepresented. Our challenge is that often we are invisible. What I yearn for is public art that is made by native artists and reflects our contemporary and vibrant communities and cultures. This isn't my traditional homelands, though. My tribe lives in North Dakota. I would love to see a Boston and a state of Massachusetts that first worked with local tribes to create art that honored this land and its first nations and reminded people that we, Native Americans, are still here. Boston is a city that is so committed to its history and its diverse neighborhoods. As such, it should have art that represents all of its history and contemporary communities, including native peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Appreciate that. Our final speaker for this evening is Sharon Tony Harjay. I hope I didn't brutalize that. Hello, Sharon.
Hi, you're forgiven. It's Autumn. When you go to the doctor, it's a ah. Hard Joe.
Okay, hard Joe.
Very much. Thank you. I'm going to take a little bit of a different direction with this. I'm going to be talking as a, as a grandmother, a tribal person who's four fourths Kiowa, full blood. And a retired teacher and a professional painter of art. It's very interesting to listen to all of you. I'm in agreement with most of you. I do have some questions about some things, so I'll deal with that later. But I wanted to let you know that I was a public school teacher for 32 years, retired from that, but at the same time, I maintained a professional career as a painter. And I'm 76 now. I have been in the business since the early 70s, 1970s. And have been many times in the Boston area, Providence, and I lived for a time in Groton, Connecticut. But as I see as an artist, I know back in the 70s, we were very welcomed with artwork. And over the years, I've seen the changes where we're still kind of separated out because we're Western artists, not Western as in painting, Western art, but we're Western tribal groups. And I see that, you know, the times have changed. When we were there earlier, we were included in exhibitions. And our stories are pretty much told. But I don't know if it's a generation thing that we have we have been put back a little bit. But I hope it's not going to be. I hope this is a new route for the museums to help out the best way they can in the communities, especially the Indian communities across the country, not just in Boston. I think that some of the things in the museums that are happening, we need to pay more attention to who is an artist, who is a Native person, how they relate to what the story that the museum perhaps wants to be telling. And I think that's going to take a lot of work probably from some individuals in the place where they need to be. It's real difficult to be in, even here in Oklahoma, it's very difficult to have have a sense of where you belong in the art world. I also want to say something a little bit about the Indian Arts and Arts Act, which was a big part of my life back in the, when I first started again, because it is quite an old law, but it has worked its way back up to where we are. But I think it's an important situation that we need to keep, keep that in mind as we go forward, not just here or there, but everywhere in our country and maybe some other places where our people were to be. I wanted to say, as a grandmother, I have had the opportunity, and some people think it's kind of a strange way, but I had to stay home with my grandchildren this year and teach them virtually, and that's just something new for me. But I saw where art part might be part of what you're doing here because in seeing the cultural and colonial things, very interesting, some things I didn't know, but there's some things I still think, I think they're kind of off on the left field. I really think the arts can be that way of getting this educational thing out there for us, whether it's through museums, through your participation as experts for to move these educational things forward. I always looked forward to teaching in the public schools because I was usually the only Indian in the classroom. And that's when I took the advice to go ahead and make culture part of the studies that we were doing, and still worked around with that. As someone who was in Boston for several times, just within the last five years, it's been very interesting to visit the museums and to see what has been going on as opposed to what it was in the 70s. And there are some great strides in some areas, but I'm very much in agreement with Jonathan Perry and his sister, Elizabeth. I think there is a very vital need for the Indian people in the communities to really be involved in what they are doing. I just appreciate, you know, those of you that I do know, your attempt to make us feel at home when we were there. I miss all that, but I'm kind of glad to be back in my own homeland here. And I wish you continued success in whatever you're doing and hope that people can make right choices for themselves and for the communities, especially for the Indian people who are involved. I think I've spoken long enough, and I hope that I got across. I'm not a scholar, just an educator for, not just, but an educator. I had a choice to teach art, and I tried to incorporate that into my daily lessons and was well accepted. I spoke, I mean, I taught in a community that was, there was not very many Indian people there, but they did. I will tell you this, we had an Indian education program, which is when I started in as an educator in Adnan. And I want to remind people that you have Indian people in your communities, and you count those students for your programs, and you need to serve them all because they're not all from just one community. They're from all across the country. And that's really important to make sure that they are counted and that you are serving them in the way that they feel their parents need to know that you feel that you want to educate their child all the way across. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. I just want to say, all grandmothers are scholars in some way, and definitely all educators are. So thank you for your service as a teacher and for reminding us that there are many different types of tribal experiences that we can learn about and share with one another. So I want to open up to the commissioners for commentary, questions, comments. Commissioners who are here, I'm gonna put my screen on so I can see all of you.
My name is Robert Freeman. Unfortunately, my video is not. Someone else.
Well, don't forget to mute yourselves if you're not speaking directly. If you could mute yourself, that would be so helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I think I can start all over again. My name is Robert Freeman, and I apologize for the lack of a video. My camera doesn't seem to be working. I just wanted to thank all the speakers. It was just wonderful hearing the stories that we should have heard a long time ago. This is, this meeting is long overdue, and I think that we all learned so much from what you had to say. I live in JP, and it was mentioned that there is a, on South Huntington Avenue, an office of, and I couldn't catch exactly what the office was. I certainly would like to visit that office. It should be right down the street from me. I think Ms. Monroe mentioned it, and if it could be mentioned again and talked about just briefly, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
That's 105 South Huntington Ave, North American Idiot Center.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say just something about Elizabeth Perry's project because I was at the Museum of Fine Arts yesterday. And it has already had a profound effect on the atmosphere there. I took some pictures, and I was actually going to send them to you, Elizabeth, but just having the corn and those plants around the doll and sculpture, I hope most of you are familiar with the sculpture that's been the front, the frontispiece for the museum for such a long time and has been troubling for such a long time. And the action of Elizabeth Perry's vision for Ravenry Shapes: Boston has already changed the atmosphere in collaboration with Mother Nature or with nature. So I think someone here mentioned something about looking at monuments differently. Things in the Boston landscape that are made of steel and stone, maybe we could think about monuments differently. And I think that Elizabeth has definitely created a vision for that. And I'm looking forward to seeing this wonderful monument that grows and takes shape and then is able to be shared. Anyone who hasn't gotten down there, even in these beginning stages, I would make my way if I were you. So thank you for that, Elizabeth, and it could be the beginning of how we begin to think about things differently.
Kapitash. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank all of the speakers and the presenters this evening, and also the families that support all of your work as well. As an incredible community, we all definitely need more representation. As I am, you know, for example, the representative for the Public Library of Boston, there's a representative for the Museum of Fine Arts, Boston Society of Architects, Massachusetts College of Art, the Boston Stewart Gardner. I'm wondering if we can, as a commissioner, I would like to find out how we can actually have an institution from Indigenous people to perhaps find a representative in order to get a more diverse set of opinions and outlooks and service on this commission itself. Thank you all very much for this hard work.
I'm John Andrews, Commissioner here. Camilo, I think that's an amazing suggestion you just made. And I wanted to thank each and every one of you for your time and your testimony today. We're gathered together on a virtual Zoom call to talk about something that's so deeply important to this city, the representation and acknowledgement of how we can better tell these stories of the histories of Boston. And I was moved, untouched, and have a lot of work to do with some of these names of artists, with some of the information that you presented with us today. So I have a lot of learning to do moving forward, and I so appreciate your sharing just of your time and your ideas and your enthusiasm for supporting this work along with us. Thank you.
And John, I can just follow up to, I was going to say similarly, and to thank everyone who presented today, but then to thank all of those who did present for reminding us of the work that we all must do as a commission. That was, you know, one of the things that has struck out to me most is we have a lot of work to do in really thinking about creating public art in Boston that is more reflective of all of the communities in Boston, and especially the Indigenous communities who we heard from today, who have for so long not been reflected in the public art in the city. And then I also just kind of really appreciated and valued both the comments that were a little bit larger in scope and kind of addressed some of the larger structural challenges we kind of think about and operate within, but then also the recommendations and suggestions and ideas that were shared by the presenters that were also more actionable and things that, you know, we, I think, can make progress on in different ways. So just to kind of thank all of you for the depth and breadth of the comments that we've heard today.
I think that every commissioner, oh, Kim, is Kim still here? Kim, would you like to say a word? I think she may not have been able to stay.
Yeah, I don't see her.
I think all commissioners, did you have a chance to say who wanted to speak? I think everybody did, right? Did I miss anyone?
I think so.
I just wanted to make sure too that if there was anyone else in the room who hasn't shared thoughts yet, if we're opening it up.
That was our next step, is to open up to any members of the public who would like to make testimony. Now that all commissioners have also reactions, are there members? And Tricia, do you see any hands up or comments? That we welcome comments from the general public.
I don't have anything in the chat currently, and I don't see any hands raised, but I can follow up with you in a brief amount of time.
And any speaker who would like to reflect additionally, we would welcome that as well. If there's any feedback on other things you heard today or comments that we've made, we didn't welcome that.
This is Toni. Can I go?
Yes, of course.
Okay, sorry, there's a lawnmower running behind me too. I would like to reflect since I was the first, and you know, you always forget what you're saying, thanks to alphabetical order. But yeah, the one thing I want to say is, is there a way that we can submit some resources to the organization? So I was the author of the National Congress of the American Indian Resolution, which is a pdx 20041 for anybody that's writing notes, which is a resolution for protective barriers for artists, scholars and community members who are needing to make application for art projects. And so I'll provide that to you, but then also I've been one of the authors of the American Indian Culture and Research Journal on fraud in Native American art, and I'll provide that essay to you as well. But we do want to remind the commissioners that the public law, federal public law, 101-644 exclusively holds hold you accountable to verification of individuals when it comes to art projects. And so anything that moves forward when it comes through the grants or allocated monies for these, we do want to recommend that you follow the law as close as possible because we don't want to see another arts organization get held up in federal court. When it comes to the fines, they are hefty fines, which are, we start with $250,000 on up into the millions. And there are many New England organizations who are struggling with this at this time because we just accept any descended self-identification title and then spend a lot of money and then also spend a lot of money on court. So we want to just avoid that altogether and help the Arts Commission understand some of the red tape that we have to step through as Native people in the arts. And if we can be of any resource to you, to make that available.
Thank you. Yes, and Karen, put in the chat, the way anybody can contribute anything to us, just by emailing bac@boston.gov. You can send us material that will be useful to us. And I appreciate you being willing to share resources. And I also think maybe we should have our corporate counsel help us understand the law that you're referencing further and what guidelines it offers to us as a commission and how we can best comply with those guidelines. So thank you for bringing that up. I think you're the second speaker to bring that issue up. So thank you for letting us know that we should comply with the law, which should be obvious, but isn't always. So thank you for that. Erin, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I did want to ask of the commission. In hearing some of the testimony here today, I'm hearing a lot of commonality in cultural space and Native art. And I know that the Parks Commission is a separate commission. And I'm wondering, because I feel like things like naming and signage and stuff like that goes through the Parks Commission, and I'm wondering what your connection is like. Do you consult? How do you work? Because so many of our issues are intertwined with that. I'm wondering how you work with the Parks Commission or whether you do, and what that might look like moving forward for some of these issues.
That's an excellent question, and I think we, maybe I'll defer to Karen after a few words from me. But generally, we do collaborate with them. But I think in opposition to what one of our speakers said, this sort of separation of things is not within the traditions that you're talking about. We do, we are ruled by a structure in which there's separation. So things like naming rights of parklands are not our purview. We don't weigh in on that. We don't have a role in that. However, we collaborate very closely and have a very good and strong relationship with parks. So I think on issues that many of you have brought up, we can have a collaborative discussion and role in thinking about those things. Although our, you know, structural systems that we're guided by oftentimes mean that certain decisions are held by parks and other decisions are held by the commission. Karen, do you want to add any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I love that we work with parks often and frequently on projects. And there have been conversations at the, you know, about structuring, more citywide conversations around the naming of places that happen. So I think we were all very engaged in dialogue around monuments this year and, you know, realized that there were overlapping interests there. So there's been talk of forming something, you know, a broader space for that conversation.
you know, a broader space for that conversation. But our relationships with parks, I will say, you know, tends not to get as broad and tends to be project by project and individual. So, and I think you bring up a good point for that need, which again has come up, but hasn't, it's not our, our, our regular way of working every day. So I think it's a it's an issue that requires a broader strategic citywide approach.
I'd also add that we as commissioners are also private citizens. Uh, and we are purposely appointed not as political people, but as independent voices to represent various communities in the city. I, I agree with Camilo that that could be actually rethought on some levels or perhaps enhanced to be more inclusive of communities that aren't represented right now. However, we are private citizens and some of the things that you've said to us today are things that I feel like we as private citizens should be hacking on and demanding from our government as well. And I'll dance with either the communities spoken today. So what, if we, we may not have our purview as official designees of the art commission, but we always have our ability to be private citizens who engage with these issues.
And I'll say also, Erin, like, as you know, like our offices of arts and culture. And I think, you know, you know, we talked a little bit today. Elizabeth made great points about like the definitions of art and how we like lose sight of the holistic view of our communities with such a narrow definition. But I think through the lens of culture, we, we are able to see ourselves more broadly from the work of the mayor's office of arts and culture. And we are working toward that. And I hope we can see today's meeting as, as an effort towards that work. So we do see that in our responsibility to help make those connections and to go past the everyday work that we get caught up in and to think more broadly on the impact the city has on, on everyone.
Any other speakers would like to ask a question or make an additional comment?
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to say something, if, if I may. Can the folks hear me? I'm sorry. I can't tell if you can.
Jonathan, is that, do you want to identify yourself?
Yes, Jonathan James Perry, Quinna Wampano. I was just wanting to, you know, kind of go back to some of my earlier statements and, and say, I think it's important for indigenous people to have voice in the decision making, you know, representation on the higher level to help facilitate and create space for the communities to participate. I think it is, it's vitally important to, to vet those individuals or that individual very carefully and, you know, to make sure that the, you know, that, that the, the chosen person or people are well respected, well vetted and have a broad understanding of the needs of the people, right? So it's, it's, uh, you know, understanding the art world, understanding the intricacies of it, but also understanding tribal government and proper governance and you know, consistent knowledge and understanding of, of culture and identity. Right? And so I think it's, it's, you know, fundamentally important for it to be well handled. But I, I honestly think that indigenous people have to have that decision-making space in order for anything to move forward properly.
Thank you. I, I would agree too. I think that's so important to have agency here. And I, I still want to see if there's a few other people that want to talk or if we're, is that, Robert, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, um, I just want to thank you guys for coming together and taking a look at, at what is here. And I think if you really look at the possibilities, it's a win for everybody. It would, it would make Boston much richer to have a strong native presence. Maybe even a major powwow eventually and other things that have to do with our culture. I have something we call Stomp Day, where you take a piece of green grass and draw a pattern on it of a stomp dance and stomp on it until that pattern is in the, the grass. And you would do that to fight addiction. And if you lost somebody from addiction, you go on that stomp path and you stop. And it would be something that isn't permanent unless you use it. And if people stop on that path, it will be as, it will be permanent as long as you use the path. And if somebody lost somebody, you know, where somebody's struggling with addiction, they get on the stomp path. But those are, that's like just one thing that we have to offer culturally that can make Boston much richer. And it would be something that would benefit anybody who's suffering from, from addiction or has a family member that they're trying to reach or trying to get back in to having a manageable life. It's taken a lot of, a great toll on native people. And I think we should, uh, you know, continue addressing that now that COVID is winding down. We still have to address addiction problem. And there is a lot of possibility, a lot, a lot of things that we can do that would make Boston richer. And thank you for bringing us together and seeing our faces and hearing our words. Thanks.
I see that Kimberly is back. So I wonder, Kim, if you wanted to say a few words as the newest member of the Boston Art Commission.
You know, I'm sorry. I was just getting a lot of calls from work even into the evening. So every time I got on a call that it kind of made me get off of this one. But I am incredibly honored to be on the commission and to have heard so many of the comments tonight. That I was excited. This was my first meeting that I was able to attend since I have become a commissioner. And I feel that so many of the thoughts that I heard tonight are really, really important. And I like what the last caller actually said was thanks for the words being heard and the faces being seen. And I think that's really the importance of our charge for the, the Boston Arts Commission is to make sure as many people are seen as, as we can make happen.
That's a good point. Let's wrap up on, Kim, you, you got to start with a really amazing meeting. I feel like I've learned an enormous amount and also you're like, this is the kind of thing that inspires us to future action. And so I do want to say that this is, you know, a first of, I hope, many conversations between the commission and many members of the public who have interest in these issues. But we also know that we have some responsibilities to act on what you've told us today and to think more about it and to develop new ways of seeing art or new ways of opening avenues for young artists who might be, as one of you said, felt feeling left behind. Or for people who are invisible, even though they're standing before you. Phrases that resonated well with me. And that I hope that we can honor them in some action in the future as a commission with some real deliverables that will enrich the city, as Robert said. You know, I think this is the goal of why all of us became art members of the art commission is to enrich the city. And I, I think there are, there's a big absence in the voices that are being, or the stories that are being told. Aware of that. And you've made us even more aware of that. And I hope that we can work together to find ways to overcome that absence. So thank you to everybody for participating today. It's been a real, real pleasure for me and I think all the other commissioners as well.
Absolutely. Look forward to doing more work with all of you. And again, anything that you want to share with the art commission that can be shared out later, the email is in the chat and we look forward to some of the resources that are already in the chat to enrich ourselves. So we'll see you next time.
Okay, commissioners, we have one last bit of business here, which is to adjourn the meeting. Uh, and I think we can joyfully adjourn this time as well. It's a beautiful day. We learned a lot. We had a great afternoon of discussion with some wonderful people. So I ask for a motion to adjourn. Robert made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, Kim, I'm going to call on you first.
I, in favor.
Yes, in favor.
Camilo?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And did I miss anybody? I think that's, oh, me. I'm a yeses. We are officially adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for, for guiding us here. It's really, really inspiring and also challenging in a positive light. So thank you so much. And to Erin especially for helping organize this.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.